Good morning. At this time, we'll call to the Board of County Commissioners meeting for Thursday, March 15. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner McClellan.
Here.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
And Chairman Ilott.
Here. All are present. We do have a quorum. Would you join with me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those who are in attendance, appreciate it if you could turn any noise-making device to silent or off, so as not to interfere with our electronic communications. We do have a couple of presentations to make this morning. We'll do so at this time. I'd like to ask Nancy Tamquary and Katie Baker to join me at the podium this morning. We have a... Come on up.
Thank you.
I'm not going to put you on the spot yet. We have a proclamation this morning recognizing Meals... excuse me, March for Meals Month. And this is one of those activities of our Human Services and Area on the Agency Departments that really we don't highlight enough. It's so very, very important when we talk about delivering nutrition... nutritional meals to elderly in our community who don't have the ability to get out on their own. And I think every commissioner probably has had a ride along with the volunteer driver who delivers those meals. Not only does that service provide a nutritional meal at least once a day, but it also gives someone an opportunity to do a check on those people who receive that service, and that's also very, very important. So I heard this proclamation, and I'm going to present it to you in recognition of your effort and all the volunteer efforts and the importance of this program to residents of Johnson County. And I know, Nancy, you have some other data to share with us, so please do so.
Okay. Well, I'm just going to briefly share some statistics regarding the Area Agency on Aging Meals on Wheels program. In 2017, we utilized 53 volunteers a day, which is 265 a week, totaling 15,072 hours annually to deliver 212,000 meals. So you can see, it's a big program, and there's a big need out there in our county. And they actually do deliver more than a meal. Commissioner Ilott touched on this. They also provide socialization and a welfare check. And on rare occasions, and we're very grateful it's rare, the volunteers have had to call 911, which is a good thing because they've saved lives out there. And they're the ones that really, when they deliver these meals, they recognize when something isn't quite right with those residents. So they're just really very invaluable to us. We just really can't thank them enough for their day-in and their day-out delivery. So all you Meals on Wheels volunteers out there, thank you so very, very much. We're grateful.
Katie, did you want to make comments? Well, again, I just simply want to underscore, this is one of those very, very important community programs which could not exist without the tremendous work of the volunteers who make it successful. So for all of those out there who have delivered a meal, thank you very, very much. So ladies, thank you.
What does that do? Appreciate it.
And next, I want Mr. Tim DeWist to come up to the podium and give us a report on the Arts KC program. So, Tim, you're the chairman of that effort this year.
I am, yes.
So I'm guessing you have good news to report?
I do have good news and just a little brief presentation that I'd like to share with you all.
Okay, very good.
So, again, this is the results from our 2018... 2018 Arts KC campaign that really went during the month of February. And this is actually the third year that I've chaired the Arts KC campaign. And really, when I first became the director at the Mental Health Center, I was asked to do it initially, and I said yes. And then I continued to do it because I really wanted to continue to do it until the Arts and Heritage Center was open so that I could be part of the first one at the new Arts and Heritage Center. So we were able to do that, and it was a great success. It's a beautiful venue for the art. It's a beautiful venue to share our employees' arts. We have a tremendous amount of artists, both graphic artists, musicians, the whole gamut. And with that facility, we've been able to share that, and so I think that was a wonderful opportunity. We had 72 art... works of art submitted. We were able to raise $1,400 through the silent auctions and the purchase of the artwork that people provided to us. And we also do a campaign where we vote for the People's Choice Awards. And so this year, we have the People's Choice Awards, and I want to share those with you. The first place was from Jared in Public Works. And so this will be the cover of next year's calendar that will be sold. Second place was from Zeb, and he also is in Public Works. And it will be featured in the calendar itself as well. And then finally, third place was the Chief's Union Station, and it will also be featured in next year's calendar. And so those are the three that were voted that had the highest amount of votes from our employees and were identified as the choice from the employees to really be featured next year. Department awards, we also recognize each department for their contributions. So this year, Corrections was third place. Second place was Human Resources. And first place was the Human Services Department. So this trophy, which has been in the county manager's office for several years, is now going to be moved over to Human Services. And I don't think... I see Deb here, Debbie here, so I will make sure to get this over to her so that they can hold on to this for at least this year, and we'll see if another department next year can knock them off as far as providing the most funds to Arts KC. As far as the campaign goal, we set a lofty goal of $25,000, which was way over what we had made in previous years. So we really were going for the gold. And we weren't able. We fell short of our total goal, but we still made 15... close to $16,000 for Arts KC. So regardless of whether we met our lofty goal, we wanted to make sure to shoot high. I feel like we accomplished what we wanted to, and that was to bring the arts to the forefront, share with everyone how important they are, and share with people of Johnson County how they impact one another's lives and make our community a better place to live, work, and socialize. So 15,000, close to $16,000 total for the campaign. I do want to provide a few special thanks. One for all of the work. We have a committee, so while I'm the chairman for the last three years, really, I just get to come up here and say what happened. I didn't do all the hard work. But we have a group of really dedicated employees that Arts KC is important to them, and they each and every year step up and do the work to make this big event happen. So I wanted to provide special thanks to them. Also, the department representatives, all the employee artists that donated their art that came and joined us on the night of the reception. And then particularly, to all the donors who gave to the Arts KC fund. And then finally, I also wanted to... I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Lydia Allen, who is the campaign fund manager. Thank her for the work that she does with us to make this all happen. So with that, I'll just say thank you, and I look forward to next year.
Well, Tim, thank you very much. Stick around for a second. You know, it's always been, I guess, a good feeling, or I could use another adjective, somewhat amazing when we look at the artistic talent that's evident amongst our county employees with this program. It's just... it is amazing. And so we're glad to have this opportunity that engineers can do something besides design a bridge and be recognized. I say that kiddingly, Brian Peedig, wherever you're at. But it is an outstanding program to give our employees the opportunity to expand their ideas and their thoughts beyond the workplace. So thanks to all of them, and thank you, Tim, for your leadership.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
She was taking a picture, but why don't I get a picture with... I'd love to take a picture of the chairman, but we can also get a picture with Deb, with me giving this to her. She's not here, so I'll work with you.
Oh, okay. All right, that's fine.
Do you want to do that? I can still take a picture with you, though. I always like that.
It's confusing. Hold it up, hold it up, and we'll...
Perfect. I'll remember that next time.
All right. At this time, we will turn to the public comment portion of our agenda. If there's anyone present who would like to address the commission on an item which does not later appear on the agenda, would invite you to the podium, state your name and address, limit your comment to five minutes, and we'll be glad to receive that information. Is there anyone to be heard? Okay. If there's no one to be heard, the public comment portion of our agenda is concluded. I do have one note for the record. I will be signing three agreements with the city of Lenexa for the public improvement of the following: Lenexa Drive from Quavira Road to Flum Road; for Mize Road from 83rd Street to North City Limits; and for Flum Road from 87th Street Parkway to North City Limits. That concludes notes for the record. Moving to the consent agenda, will the clerk please read the proposed agenda?
Item number one, consider approving the February 22, 2018 business session minutes. And item number two, consider authorizing the purchase of two 2018 model-year ambulances from Pinnacle Emergency Vehicles LLC, reused by Johnson County Med Act, in an amount not to exceed $382,024 to be paid from the Med Act Equipment Reserve Fund per Houston-Galveston Area Council Contract AM 10-16.
Is there a commissioner who would like to have one of these items considered separately? Is there anyone present who would like to have either of these items considered separately? If not, it's back before the commission. A motion is in order. Mr. Osterhaus.
I move that we approve. The consent agenda is read.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner McClellan.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilott.
Aye. Motion carried. Moving to the action agenda, item number three.
Consider authorizing a contract change order with Mega Industries Corporation for additional construction work required under the Nelson Solids Handling Improvement Project, Contract 20, in amount not to exceed $277,485, increasing the total contract to $6,906,486.03.
Ms. Pecari.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Susan Pecari with Waste Water. There's no funding requested as part of this item this morning. The board had authorized the funding for the solids handling improvement at our Nelson Complex Treatment Facility in October of 2015. Nelson Complex is shown here on your map. The border is outlined here in yellow. That's I-35 running across the top, and this is Lamar Avenue running along the western edge of that map there. The purpose of the project was to rehabilitate the critical components of our solids handling system, including the centrifuge equipment. Solids are removed as part of the wastewater treatment process, and the solids are fed to the centrifuge equipment, which is shown here, located in Building 14, shown here on your map in the red border. It's fed from the sledge building, which is shown as Building 9 here on the map. The sledge piping runs across the parking lot there. The condition of the pipe that was underneath the main floor of Building 14 where the centrifuge equipment was found to be deteriorated during the project. JCW staff recommends rerouting this pipe out from underneath the building so that we're not undermining the foundation of the building from a leaking pipe. The pipe running between the building, the sledge building, and the centrifuge building, that sledge piping was televised, and it was also found to be deteriorating, and so therefore, we recommend replacing this piping. Solids removal is done at two wastewater treatment plants in our system, and Nelson is one of them, so this is critical to have this functioning all the time. We requested cost proposals from the contractor that's doing the work on this project, Mega Industries Corporation, to reroute the pipe and replace the two pipes that I just discussed. They'll perform their work on a time and materials basis for a maximum not to exceed of $277,485. Excuse me. Again, there's no additional funding requested. We have contingency funding remaining in the project funds, and we'll use that to cover the costs here. Because this change order exceeds $100,000, purchasing policy requires that the board approve the change order. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Susan, this facility is for many people outside out of mind because of its location, and as I understand, this is one of our oldest facilities. How long has this facility been in use?
This facility has been around since the end of World War II, 1945, so 73 years.
So it may be time to replace some pipes?
We're getting close. We're looking at that.
All right, thank you. Questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Pecari, thank you for your presentation. Just one question. What other options did we consider other than using Mega to do this work? Were there any other opportunities to make sure that the price that they're quoting... because it's a rather specific price maximum. And I just was wondering how we or how they arrived at that, and how do we know that this is the best option available?
Well, they're still on site, so that's an advantage, that they're still doing work. Number two, we have the schedule of values for the rest of the work they did as part of the project, and that was competitively bid. So we have the ability to evaluate their proposed costs for labor and for materials. And so the design engineer, CDM, who is also providing construction phase services, they reviewed that and found their proposal to be reasonable. Since they're doing it on a time and materials basis, we'll only be paying for what is needed to complete the work.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? There being no one to be heard, Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the Board of County Commissioners authorize a contract change order with Mega Industry Corporation for additional construction work required under the Nelson Solids Handling Improvements Project, Contract Number 20, in amount not to exceed $277,485, increasing the total contract to $6,906,486.03.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to authorize the work as outlined with Mega Industries. Any further questions or comments? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I am supportive of this action, although in the future, for me, it would be helpful to have some sense from the staff's perspective, not only of the cost, but also the length of time proposed, to understand exactly the total cost and how it's supported. And that's just a kind of a procedural observation on the briefing sheets.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner McClellan.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilott.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item, number four.
Resolution Number 011-18 and application number SEPD P3370. Consider a request from Phelps Engineering Applicant and Joseph Effer Farms LLC Land Owner for a final development plan for construction of a motor vehicle test track on a 47.2-acre site located near the northwest corner of 207th Street and Metcalf Avenue.
Mr. Lipstick.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jay Lipstick, Planning Development Coaches Director. This item is brought before you for a final development plan at 207th Street and Metcalf, presented by Phelps Engineering as the applicant and Joseph Efforts Farms LLC. Staff has been working on this application for quite some time, and so we're excited to bring it forward to you. It was a staff recommended approval for the final development plan. It was presented before the Southeast Consolidated Zoning Board on February 7, which I might add was the first meeting of that new board. I'm excited about that. The final development plan is consistent with the preliminary development plan that was approved on October 20 in 2015. With that, I'd be happy to stand for any additional questions.
Questions, staff? Okay. Is the applicant present? Any comments the applicant would like to make? Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission on this item? If not, it's back before the commission. A motion is in order. Mr. McClellan.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 011-18, approving a final development plan for the construction of a motor vehicle test track for the reasons and subjects to the stipulations set forth within the resolution.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the resolution and the application as noted. Any further comments or questions? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner McClellan.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilott.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number five, application number SEPD P3369. Consider a request from Dan Knight, applicant, and Mark Calvin Dunn, landowner, for preliminary development plan plat for five residential lots, Blue River Estates, a 19-acre zone, PRU 1A, planned residential urban single-family 1A district.
As I recall, this is one that we need to continue at the request of the applicant. Is that right, Jay?
Yes, that is correct, Mr. Chairman. The applicant has requested a continuance until April the 5th, so this will be before you again for the agenda review on March 29. That was to consider some additional discussion with some of the property owners in the area. We have a meeting scheduled for next Wednesday, the 21st, at 6:30 at the fire station on Metcalf.
Okay. All right, so the motion should be to continue this item until the agenda review of March 29?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Mr. Osterhaus.
I move to continue item number five until the March 29 agenda review.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the continuance as noted. Any questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner McClellan.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilott.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number six, invitation for bid number 2018-009. Consider authorizing a contract with Tandem Paving Company, Inc., for Johnson County Election Office's parking lot improvements in the amount of $676,909.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Janice Phillips, Facilities. I'm bringing forward the paving project at the Elections Office on Kansas City Road in Olathe. The project goals were improving the safety and efficiencies of this property. We achieved these goals through the design of a separate and distinct drive-through, drop-off ballot area by a separation of the... an expansion of a visitor's parking area, by relocating and further separating the curb cuts to the property, and by a small increase in the parking stalls added primarily at the major entrance to the building. The separate ballot drop-off area is a primary feature to allow citizens to drive through, deliver their ballot, and exit the property without ever interacting with vehicles by getting out of their car. In addition to this improved efficiency and safety, we were also able to incorporate much-needed site drainage improvements as part of the design. Commissioner McClellan, staff advised you the cost in the project were in direct response to the site grade and subgrade. The desired project goal here is to provide an end product that will offer much longevity with minimal cost for maintenance. The staff also investigated the use of the triangular area to the east of the building. This particular area is integral to the site drainage for not only this property, but properties upstream, and therefore, staff recommends the retention of this portion of the site for that purpose of site drainage. Elections was involved throughout this entire process and is in full support of the final design. The project did go through a public bid process. We are very pleased that we had the number of bidders that we did. We do recommend award, and that completes my presentation. If you have any questions.
Okay, questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Phillips, could you remind us again what the engineering estimate was on this? I think you mentioned that last week.
I did.
It's not in the briefing sheet, so I just... if it is, I missed it.
The engineer's opinion of probable cost is $661,501.85.
Eighty-five cents?
Yes.
Okay, okay, very good. What is the net increase in parking spots that this plan will be offering us? Or is there an increase?
There is an increase of 11 stalls. Eight of those are at the visitor's entrance. Three of those eight are accessible parking stalls.
Okay, very good. And I'll direct this to you, but if you want to deflect it, because I noticed that the election commissioner came in here. When this was... this idea was first proposed, one of the points that the election commissioner so eloquently offered was that this remodeling or reconfiguring of the entryway would add enough parking places... parking spaces, stalls, I think is the term he used, so that his staff would no longer have to navigate the walk from the Cisco parking lot to the entrance to the facility. And that was seen as an inconvenience and somewhat dangerous at some points. So is that all the number of parking spaces we need to alleviate that problem?
I'm going to take a first stab, but I do welcome the Director of Elections to come up and speak to this as well. We have... I will just say that he has been involved in... from the very beginning.
Sure.
In the design and determining the project goals for this. And again, reiterate, he's in full support of the final design.
Mr. Metzger.
Thank you, Ronnie Metzger, Election Commissioner, Johnson County Election Office. Thank you for the time to help expand this discussion a little bit. The project initially, you know, had a very wet finger estimate on the...
A what?
A wet... just a guess.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's what I call it. Put it up in the air, and I think it would cost about this much.
Right.
Because that's the way how projects originate customarily. Is we take a look at it within the county, we say, okay, it's going to be about this much. As the project moves forward, and there are engineering studies and designs made, and surprises arrive, and more facts come out, then you're able to get closer to the cost. I'll short-circuit this to the point that this project was about twice this size in its origination, that encompassed expanding, almost doubling, our parking lot. And because of the size and how the estimate came out after the engineering study and subsequently letting of the bids, we downsized the footprint of this project to be just that portion at the front... from the front of the building out to the Kansas City Road right away. And so there's yet more to be done in terms of expansion of the parking lot for the number of spa- of spaces. That'll come in a subsequent discussion, you know, later as we go down the road. But the primary purpose of this move, Commissioner, is to, is to address the safety issues. This is driven almost entirely by safety. We had, we had cars backed up clear to 127th Street, waiting to get in, some of them to drop ballots, some of them to try to come in to vote, others to do other things related to voting, and many trying to do things related to the running of the election. So we have multiple things going on at this location, and when we get to this pinch point, it's a big, big problem. So what was affectionately referred to as the grassy knoll, which was acquired some years ago and a house raised, all of that property has now been incorporated in this new plan. And so it's been kind of a phase one, phase two, phase three process. And what we did is we carved away what would be called phase two of this particular project, the part that is back to, to the space between Cisco and our office and parking, existing parking lot, and that will be addressed at a later date. But this is going to accomplish probably 90% of our safety concerns at this point. So it's very, very, very significant, and this will get us moving forward. The goal, of course, is, the bigger goal, in addition to safety, is to extend the life of this building on out, you know, to the 15-year point. And we, we think that this takes a huge step forward and addresses the traffic flow and enhances safety. Stand for further questions if needed.
Another question? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So is the, I want to understand, Mr. Metzger, do you believe this site, the current site has room for expansion for future parking? I was a little confused because Ms. Phillips was, I thought she was saying that triangular site to the east was needed for drainage. So, or do, will we need to expand this property or relocate?
There'll be, there'll be a reconfiguration of the existing footprint that will greatly expand the parking stalls from what it was in its original site, well, as it is today. Coupling what we're going to do with this particular contract we're considering today, plus the next phase, all of that together will almost double the total number of parking spaces as we sit today, if that's helpful. And it, and all of that work will not affect the drainage basin that is to the east of our property.
Okay. So there's, that'll be another proposal and another cost estimate at some time.
Down the road, yeah. But this gets us way down the road on the safety concerns and traffic flow issues. Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Excuse me, Mr. Brown, did you have a question?
I do, thank you, Chairman. Commissioner, if I could ask you a question. I have a concern about the ballot drop-off boxes and security of the ballots when they're placed in there in an overnight scenario, after hours dropped. What measures are in place or what kind of surety is there that the ballots that are dropped in that box can't be tampered with, can't be stolen? But how do we protect them?
We're proposing equipment that is secure and can be, can be, we can be assured that those ballots will not be able to be messed with, tampered with, whatever term you would like to use. There are at least three states that are completely mail ballot states, in Oregon, Washington, I believe, are two of them. We're in consultation with election officials in those states right now in the selection process of which ballot boxes are the ones that they would be buying today if they were doing it over, what have they learned, trying to access best practices in states where this is common practice. And so we're all concerned about ballot safety.
So if that's the case, and there's a remedy, I'm hearing you say that there are options...
Exactly. And outside of someone bringing a D8 Caterpillar and pushing it over and loading it up and hauling it off.
A lot of work.
Which I suppose could be done, but, but we, we're going to take all precautions necessary so that all of us collectively can be confident that we have security of our ballots that would be dropped overnight.
You know, just, just a thought, obviously, in off-hours or when the facility is closed, the traffic would be minimal, and you might even think about leaving the drop box into the interior of the building for use after hours. Perhaps that's, that's an option. Mr. Klicka.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I kind of, I do appreciate the conversation here that's been brought up with, with my fellow commissioners on this issue. I did raise a question last week relative to the cost impact. And in my previous life, I've had to deal with parking garages and parking structures and parking lots. So I was questioning the dollar amount that was involved. But staff was kind enough to give me some time to explain what was going on. They explained to me that essentially this is going to be a new parking lot from ground up or below-ground level. And a lot of that's a result of poor drainage underneath and the base repair that's going to have to be done, warranting and this project to be a little more expensive. Essentially, we will be getting out configuration and whatever that's going to be a longer, a longer life. I also came under, I was dealing with also an assumption back from previous conversations that we had about the purchase of the property to the north of the facility. And while we chose at one time not to pursue it, my, I was questioning whether or not that was going to be coming back on the agenda in the future, thinking that prior to making these adjustments, maybe we need to take everything into consideration. And staff advised me that, at least in the near future, that, that issue's a moot issue right now and not being concerned. So I'm okay from my perspective, and, Mr. Chairman, if you need a motion, whatever, I'd be happy to make it.
Down the road, Mr. Brown, you have another question?
One more question for the commissioner. If, if these are secure and safe, and I believe that to be the case, you've done the research, is it an option to look forward, not now, at another time, about making these available in different locations around the county for dropping off a mail ballot? Is it, is that something we could look at going forward from a convenience standpoint?
You know, if, if that comes to a point where we sense that that's critical and important to our voting process in our county, we're not limited by that. So we, it's certainly an open discussion for something in the future. That's not really been part of the culture of the voters in Johnson County to have drop boxes off of the site of the election office, but we have no limit on that. We, obviously, we discussed this with the Secretary of State's office, Director of Elections, and they, they support us because of our longstanding history of having a ballot drop box. This is actually our third rendition. The first one was a little slot in our, in our door, which got stuffed overnight and was completely insufficient, which led us to a bigger drop box, and we took out a window and made a drop box that goes into a whole room. And that's been somewhat sufficient, but now we have the traffic problem. And so this becomes our third rendition, and Secretary of State was kind enough to approve this.
Mr. Allen.
I'm going to follow up on Commissioner Brown's security concern. As we go through this, I'd maybe like to look at placing some type of camera on the building that would be on 24 hours and then actually posting on that drop-off box. This box is under 24-hour video surveillance, so if something did happen, unfortunately, we would have a record of it.
We, we have that in the plan, but we, we might not want to discuss security detail that we're planning too much because that negates the security.
Thank you. Sorry to ask.
Well, yes, good comment. Well, I, I fully support this application. The, the changes in the traffic flow in and out of this facility is long, long overdue, quite frankly. And as you indicated, you know, the backup on Kansas City Road is significant. I was also interested, we texted back and forth yesterday about something like 46,000 ballots were either mailed or dropped off at this facility in 2016, and there were 133,000 voters who appeared at the six advanced voting locations, and this is a primary and very attractive location for many of those advanced voters. So this, this improvement needed to be made, yes. Mr. Osterhaus.
Well, you kind of caught some of my comments, but I just wanted to thank Ronnie because I know he's done a lot to make voting easier for people in this county, and I really appreciate those efforts. I had a recent article out there about the new voting machines and the paper trail that they would have, so we appreciate that as well. But just wanted to say thank you to Ronnie for what he's done to make things easier for people to vote in this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I just would like to express my appreciation and the appreciation of our office and, and all those involved with us, right out to the election workers themselves, for the support of the commission, because we, without your support, we are obviously unable to, to do this and do this well. We're working very hard to do it well, but we all know that without your support, you know, it all starts to cave in, and, and then we all look bad. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission on this item? All right, there being no one to be heard, Mr. Klicka, you have a motion?
Yes, I want to make sure I get that's. I move to authorize the contract with Tandem Paving Company, Inc. for Johnson County Elections Office parking lot improvements in the amount of $676,909 per invitation for bid number 2018-009. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the bid as recommended for the election commissioner office improvements on the grounds and parking. Any further questions or discussion? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second what Commissioner Osterhaus said. I think Mr. Metzger and his staff have just done a remarkable job in the changes and efforts that they've brought forward, so good job, Ronnie, Mr. Metzger, and please keep it up. I have no question about the process that we've gone through. I do, would encourage staff to put the engineering estimate or whatever expanded title they use to talk about the comparative costs to give a sense on these briefing sheets, but that's just an interest that I have. My, my concerns with this, and I think Mr. Metzger raises a valid point about safety during those high-volume, high-traffic times, but to find, to look at this and this proposal being almost, not quite $700,000, but not addressing the long-term parking needs, which I don't know how much that will cost, but this improvement will be coming close to $1 million at some point with this and the expansion of the parking whenever that occurs. I just look at that and think, well, I, I would have hoped that there would have been more considered options in terms of safety, using temporary safety, traffic enforcement, management efforts for those high-traffic, high-time, or high-demand times and opportunities, rather than putting so much money in infrastructure. And while this project, I'm sure, will be nice and it will be beneficial for use, I just, I just have trouble supporting the $600,000 plus whatever additional monies going forward. So my vote will reflect that concern.
Okay, any other comments? All right, there being no other comments, will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
No.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Iwlet.
Aye.
Motion carried. Are there any other items on the action agenda?
No, sir.
All right, turning to reports and communications. Ms. Postock Ferguson.
Chairman and Commissioners, good morning. We have two items to report on today. The first one is attachment random that was sent last week regarding incentives per your request, a chart showing the role or action the board can take on the various incentive programs. So that is attached. Also, the next item is the city of Lenexa. On Tuesday, February 20th, city adopted a redevelopment project plan 3G within the redevelopment district in city center. And so the attack, the details are attached. It is for two-phase area within the city center between 87th and 87th Street Parkway, between Winchester and Elmeridge, and it's for 21,000 square feet of two-story multi-tenant retail building and a 6,000 square foot multi-tenant retail building in phase two of that. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
Questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to thank Mr. Brown. He raised an issue a few weeks ago, two or three weeks ago, asking staff to outline the various financing mechanisms used by communities. I want to thank Mr. Jarrett for putting that together. I've been trying to piece that together for some time, and it just never dawned on me. Well, just ask the attorney, ask the attorney. So, so thank you, Mr. Brown, and thank you, Mr. Jarrett. The one question I had, though, and, Mr. Jarrett, I guess I'll direct this to you, is I didn't see or, maybe I should ask it this way. Are there statements in terms of how or why various finance options can or should be sought? And specifically, at one point, it was presented that, for example, TIFs were used to address the needs, and the term they used are brownfield areas that have difficulty being developed readily by general developers. Maybe there are pollution issues or other issues. And I just, and to use TIFs in that regard, and that has seemed to have evolved over time to be more what is now called greenfield uses. And is that, is that outlined in law or general practice, or is that just something that's developed in the ether, and I misunderstand what the potentials were there?
All of the special financing tools have prerequisite qualifications for utilizing them. So there are statutory or regulatory requirements that have to be met, that the cities have to certify that they meet that qualification in order to utilize the tool.
Okay.
We didn't put them on the chart because they're quite wordy. It's very difficult to slip them in there, and they are findings that the cities are required to make before they get here. But if you like, we could try to break those down for you. But each of the tools has a set of qualifications that have to be met.
Well, I'm not going to ask that necessarily, but when the cities bring forward their information to us in whatever capacity, do they provide an outline that has met those requirements, those certifications? Because I, I just don't recall seeing that, and like on this one today, not to pick on this one in Lenexa, I just don't see that. Is that a, is that a brownfield, or is it just a general economic development desire? And do all those qualify? And is that attested to?
Typically on TIF, you'll see that when they do the district. The one you have in front of you today.
It's a project. Fair, fair point.
They didn't, they didn't do it. But generally, when they do the district, they'll go through a set of findings, you know, that they conducted their public hearing and that they determined this, and that it qualifies under the statute.
Okay.
So typically, that's where you'll see it. But on a TIF, you'll almost always see it in the district and not repeat it in the project.
I, fair point, thank you.
From personal experience, having been in the business, going back to the 70s, the industrial revenue bond concept, which was, I think, implemented during, sometime during the 60s, it was directed towards brownfields. And because of the demand for that kind of financing, it began to expand into other areas. But at some point in time, there was always the requirement, loosely defined, I might add, that there needed to be some, some negative development that needed to be corrected or overcome, or there needed to be some kind of, of, of underdevelopment or some kind of negative activity on the property. And again, all that was loosely defined.
Well, that's my understanding, Mr. Chairman. So were there changes in the law, or was it just kind of the evolution of practice?
You're asking me something I don't know.
Okay.
But...
There were amendments added to the statute that kept saying you could also use them for these things. So there is a list of it in the statute.
So the attorneys were able to get in a few extra words, is that what you're saying?
There are always extra words, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay, legislative update.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Cindy Green with the county manager's office. First, I want to thank the commissioners and staff that were able... First, I want to thank the Commissioners and staff that were able to attend a meeting yesterday with our Johnson County delegation in Topeka. I received several positive comments that it was good to have us up there, and some requests for some future meetings on a few bills I'm going to talk about here. But one of the first bills, if the election commissioner, nope, he's left us, he's outside, the ballot signature requirement that had passed forward in the Senate is now in the House, and they worked a bill on Monday, and they're going to be sending that to the full House, and this allows individuals that are incapable or struggle with signing their name, which is some of the legal requirements, to do an advance ballot and such, that that be taken care of and help them, and assist that, that we are not jeopardizing their opportunities to vote. So, that's going to move forward. There was an amendment that was added to the bill that could create some problems, and this amendment is a requirement currently, if you request an advanced ballot, you have to do it for every election. This one would be once you request an advanced ballot, that you receive that until you change your home address, and so we will see how that plays out as they move forward. Next bill I was going to talk about is House Bill 2755, and this is a property tax lit exemption that allows people that are cities and counties, that if you assume another entity, that you will be able to take that when you are looking at your budget increases. So, the example is one of the cities is taking on an airport that was a standalone, and they would be detrimentally impacted if they weren't able to take on that additional revenue and such to take that into consideration. So, that passed out a house tax yesterday, and they put that on the consent agenda, and today's day one of that. Next bill, we learned about this yesterday while we were up there, our Shawnee representative, Tom Cox, introduced a bill, and it's 2779, and it's called the Senior Citizen Property Tax Deferral Act. This is a variation of other bills that have been introduced in the past, and I just took time to read some of the highlights of it, just to give you this impact, and staff here will be reviewing it directly. I've already talked to Tom Franzen about this, and we're going to meet with John Bartelack and Paul Welcome to understand the impact of this legislation on the county. And to see, Tom is very willing to meet with us and wants to talk about what changes would be helpful, those types of things. So, this is not a done deal. I don't know that this will get through this year, as we're getting later in the session, but we want to be prepared in case this goes forward, because it is in a tax committee which is exempt.
As was mentioned yesterday, this is a deferral.
Correct.
And so, at some point in time, the full property tax bill would have to be paid.
Correct.
Out of the estate or moving, something like that?
That is something, and that is something, so it's for people that are.
I applaud the effort, but I think there are a lot of potholes that need to be addressed, i.e. mortgage companies, mortgages, anyway, yeah.
Yeah, so, but this is geared for people that are 65 and older. You have to own the home, you have to have lived there for at least 10 years, they want you to have at least, there was like a 50%, they didn't want it to be people that had, you know, only a 90% that was mortgaged and such, so that there is problems with the lien. So, there are lots of potholes, as the chairman says, that we will be looking into. And you also have to have your other taxes paid in full, so it's not just anybody that can do this. And then it's actually done through the Department of Revenue when you file your income tax. So, it goes up, and the state has to approve it, and then they send the list back down to the county treasurer, who then sends it out to the people. So, there's deadlines in there that we'll want to look at and see how that impacts our budgets and such for cities and counties of when will we know that these taxes are being deferred and such. And then it does come back into play when this person would pass away. There are a few exemptions, it looks like, in there, let's say someone still owns the home, but they go into a healthcare facility that the family's not having to sell the house if they don't want to yet, but you can't then turn around and lease the house. So, you can't, it has to be your primary residence, you can't be leasing it out and making money, but they're making some exceptions if people would be ill. So, lots of things to look into, and we'll be talking to you in the next few weeks about this further, but I wanted to give you an update since that was new legislation introduced yesterday.
Cindy, what's that bill number?
It is 2779.
Thank you. Jim.
When I spoke with Representative Cox yesterday, I think our over-65 population in Johnson County is 101,000, and.
And growing.
And growing, that's correct. And just administratively, as the chairman, there's so many details to work with. I think the better avenue personally would be looking at changing the Homestead Act would probably be better, but the financial hit and administration and just seems very complicated to implement, so, but we have, you know, that 102,000, I think, would make us the sixth-largest county in the, just the over-65 population, so we have a very significant interest in this bill. Thank you.
Okay, all right, continue, thank you.
All right, transportation, the House has created a version of the Senate tax bill that creates a transportation tax force, and they are actually having a hearing on that today. I have not compared side to side which, what the differences are in the two bills, but that's something we'll be watching for, and again, whichever bill passes potentially, we'll be looking to make sure we have some good representation on that committee when it comes to appointments. Next one is just a reminder, budget deliberations are continuing on, appropriations and ways and means have been continuing to work, but the big report will be coming today in regards to school finance, so that's kind of put a hold on everybody finalizing budgets until they understand what that dollar amount can be, and so today will be some big news on that. Yesterday, while we were there, we experienced this, while we were waiting for members to join us for lunch, there was a banking bill that some House members tried to put an amendment on for Medicaid expansion. It did not go, it was ruled not germane, but that will still be an issue. I think we watched this session, that they're looking for ways to have an opportunity to expand Medicaid. Also, yesterday, the Senate confirmed Gina Meyer Hummel as the Secretary for the Department of Children and Families, and then next week, the chairman has been invited to come talk to the Senate Tax Committee in regards to big-box stores and appraisals and the hypothetical theory on appraisal. So, we are preparing for that, and I look forward to a good report next week, and I'm open for any additional questions.
Other questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Green, thank you for your report. I, as I understand it, the firm we are using to help provide this information and support our efforts in the legislature, Federico, am I pronouncing that correctly?
That is correct.
They're new, and I'm still trying to understand kind of their perspective, but I was wondering, because in the first paragraph, there's a statement that says, "On Tuesday, the Senate Tax Committee heard, quote, 'the other side.'" What are they trying to communicate to us? Because I just hate to see that dynamic of an us versus them, because this is a very nuanced argument, or not argument, but nuanced issue, and when it's phrased like that, it sounds like it's trying to set up confrontation. What are they trying to tell us here?
I think they were probably using the language of this committee itself, quite frankly.
The committee, the Senate committee?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. So, okay, other questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Green. That concludes reports and communications, so we'll turn to commission comments. Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Had the opportunity to attend and participate in the two sessions that were performed in the northeast part of the county by Paul Welcome and his staff, very well received. Numbered, the first one was last Wednesday evening at the YMCA in Prairie Village, and the second one was last Monday morning at the Overland Park Public, not Public Works, but what do I want to say?
Community Center.
Community Center, right, there we go. Well-attended, about 80, 90 people at each of the events, a lot of great questions, a lot of good answers, and I hope the citizens who were able to attend were able to leave better informed about the process.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clicker.
Yes, a couple of things. First of all, to the staff that planned the field trip over to the State House yesterday, do appreciate the efforts that they went to, and appreciated seeing the number of our representative senators that attended that discussion, so, staff, thank you very much. Second note, I want to extend advanced congratulations to fellow Commissioner Osterhaus and his upcoming nuptials here this next weekend, and wish you a long, happy tenure and marriage coming up. Congratulations.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Ashcraft.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I was going to ask you if you were going to do anything exciting this weekend, or if anybody on the DS was going to do anything exciting. I mean, it's St. Patrick's Day, I mean, maybe indulge in some green beer, but Mr. Clicker stole my thunder. I wanted to then just congratulate the wonderful Ms. Claire and her success and her future, and hope that she always looks up to the commissioner I always look up to.
Thank you. I'm looking forward, well, congratulations, but the chivalry activity. Now, many of you may not know what that means, but there is a tradition that the new groom and new bride, the groom is provided a wheelbarrow, and they are moved down the main street, and celebrity activities could take place in one shape or another during that journey. And so, if we can find a wheelbarrow, why.
I've got one.
Maybe I'll use the Overland Park Parade route. Let's do that.
Congratulations, Mr. Allen.
I'd also like to congratulate Jason and Claire, I know that's a very big step, but I just noticed personally the change, I think you're extremely happy and look forward to long and happy marriage, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Osterhaus.
Well, thank you for all the well wishes. We are very happy and looking forward to St. Patrick's Day, a day that I will never be able to forget my anniversary, right? And they'll throw a parade every year in our honor, right? Yeah, we're really happy and excited, and I thank you, and I thank a number of constituents and people just from the community who have sent well wishes and cards and things, and that's very appreciated, and we thank you very much for that. We're sorry we can't invite everyone, we have a, I guess, small, just family wedding, but we hope one day to throw a bigger party and get everybody there, so, thank you.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll offer you a piece of advice, do not forget your anniversary. I've made that mistake, don't do that.
That's a self.
Note to self, attended legislative luncheon in Topeka yesterday, a lot of good conversation, a lot of hubbub about what's going on under the dome today. There's a report being released that's going to set off a domino effect for a whole bunch of other things in our state, and I'm looking forward to seeing where that leads us. And then Conservative Republicans of Western Johnson County had all four candidates running for Secretary of State on Monday night in a forum, and got to listen to all four of them talk and discuss what their plans are and how they vision and re-envision the Secretary of State's office, and it was well-attended, and it was a well-thought-out questions by the lady who was our moderator, and it was educational all the same. So, that's all I have, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Following up on Mr. Commissioner Schaefer's comments, I should remind anybody who wants to appeal their residential property appraisal, March 28, I believe, is the deadline, so if you're, if you want to do that, that's the deadline that you need to file that appeal. And I would also suggest during that appeals process, present information and/or photographs that might support your appeal, rather than just saying, "I think it's too high," reduce. There needs to be relevant factors provided, so, good luck. We do have a request for an executive session. Let's try, we have agenda review plus public building commission, maybe we should try that at 11:00 or 11:15 for 20 minutes.
11:10.
11:10, okay.
I move that the board recess its open meeting and convene an executive session at approximately 11:10 a.m. for a period of 20 minutes for the purpose of receiving the advice of counsel and to preserve attorney-client privilege, and to reconvene an open session into this room at approximately 11:30 a.m. or as soon thereafter as the executive session may end.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the request for the executive session. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Clicker.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Mr. Ashcraft.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Iler.
Aye, motion carried. That concludes our agenda, our regular business agenda. We are in recess. Following the agenda reviews, we will move to the executive session. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.